Our first item of business tonight will be to select an acting chairperson for the meeting, seeing as that both the Chair and Vice Chair are absent for tonight's meeting. Is there any motion for someone to be selected as an acting chairperson?
I nominate Dan Goddick.
Second.
And motion has been moved and seconded to appoint Dan Goddick as acting chairperson for tonight's meeting. I take it there's no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Dan, you are the acting chairperson for tonight's meeting.
Would you like me to sit in the center?
It's up to you. You can sit wherever you'd like.
There's no way to turn this motion down?
It's smart. It's quick.
Can I not accept it? So we've already called out order. Thank you, Mr. Hedges. If we could have everybody introduce themselves, starting at my far left?
Gary Casada.
Charlene Douglas, Mayor Pro Tem.
Dan Goddick, Acting Chair.
Doug Hedges, City Planner.
Eric Klooster.
Thank you. Item B, we have approval of minutes for our December 12, 2017, meeting. Looking for a motion?
I move approval.
Motion by Ms. Douglas, any support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item C is public comment on non-agenda items. If there is someone out in the audience that wants to speak on something that is not on the agenda, this is your time to do that. All other business, you'll have an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone that wants to speak during public comment tonight? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And move to item D, old business. Number one, zoning ordinance text amendments for preservation and replacement of existing trees. Mr. Hedges?
Yes, the draft language for the text is before you again this evening. It's been before you for about the last several meetings. There was some revisions made to the subpar paragraphs under sections M1D that were revised based on input from the last Planning Commission meeting where the language was formally discussed. One section, the Director of Planning, Mr. Tuing, wanted me to specifically refer to this evening were some of the sections that were proposed that don't involve replacement or protection of existing trees. Those were the new subpar paragraphs that were added under subsection J, dealing with the screening of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units and generators. Currently, if you look at those sections, they're on page eight of the staff report, that they're essentially, we don't have very many, hardly any standards at all. The new revised standards would require more stricter placement of where ground-mounted HVAC units and generators would be placed, specifically requiring them to be in a rear yard, not within a side yard between houses. We have had some instances of complaints where such units were put within a side yard and within close proximity of neighboring houses, which is what led to the language being proposed. The Director wanted to make sure that the Commission was made aware of those sections and if there were any issues regarding them, to get those taken care of this evening. Other than that, there are no further changes based on the text than what was presented in the staff report. If the Commission has any questions on the text, I'd be happy to answer those. Again, this is a zoning ordinance text amendment, so the resolution is to recommend the proposed language to the City Commission for formal adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. Any questions and comments for him tonight?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes. So this, because I was looking at the tree and replacement tree portion of this, and I confess I was unaware that this additional change was proposed. Did I miss something?
It's been in the reports that we, the previous reports that we've presented, the language about the generators and the HVAC units. It was an issue that we've had kind of on the side for a while that we haven't brought to the Commission until we had something else more substantial or significant to go with it. We thought since we're amending the landscaping portion of the ordinance that now would be a good time to handle that as well. But if the Commission is uncomfortable, we can, of course, remove it and hold it for another time.
Because as our, at our last reading of this, the only thing that we had left undone was the articulating the tree replacement standards. So this was added since then.
No, this is, this has been in since the first draft.
Oh, okay. Fine.
The Commission's seen.
So you're just drawing our attention to it.
Correct.
But it's always been, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looking for, are you looking for a motion for us to move this forward, Mr. Hedges, tonight?
Yes, if that's the Commission's desire, the proper motion would be to recommend the zoning ordinance text amendments to the City Commission for formal review with or without changes.
Mr. Casada?
I move to recommend these proposed zoning ordinance text amendments to the Commission for approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Casada. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any more discussion? Mr. Casada?
I would only say that I think these amendments will allow the Planning Commission to entertain proposed designs and that meet the standards, that don't meet the standards, both in minor and major ways. It allows us to be flexible, it allows the petitioners not to have to meet an impossible standard, and it gives us remedies if we do grant something significant. People are still gonna, they're gonna be required to pay into the tree fund, and we're going to advance the goals, one way or another, of the master plan and the city ordinances. So I'm in favor of this.
Great. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to item E, new business, public hearing rezoning for mixed use two to planning unit development of 112 to 1126 South Washington Avenue. Mr. Hedges?
Yeah, this is a application to do a number of things. The first part of the application will be to rezone additional parcels located at 1112 to 1126 Washington Avenue from their current zoning of mixed use two to rezone to planning unit development. The second portion would be to approve an amended final PUD site plan to construct a three-story, 36-foot building with 77 multiple-family dwelling units and ground-level parking across all combined parcels. The Planning Commission has previously reviewed a PUD for a portion of this property. It's the portion that's at the southwest corner of West Harrison Avenue and South Washington Avenue. It was the parking lot for the, that used to be used by the former bowling alley that was on Washington Avenue. That project involved a building of the same height of three stories and 36 feet, and it had 26 multiple-family dwelling units. That project has been through the Planning Commission and has also been reviewed and approved by the City Commission. Since that time, the petitioner has acquired the remaining four parcels on this block that front on South Washington, and they now desire to have the PUD expanded to cover those parcels and to enlarge the building and add additional dwelling units to it. So the previous building had 26 dwelling units. If expanded across the other parcels, they would, the building would contain 77 dwelling units. For the boards, some of the questions have been asked is how this compares density-wise to what was approved. The previous development with 26 units, which has already been approved, would have equated to a ratio of 72 dwelling units per acre. The revised proposal with 77 units would come to a ratio of 89 dwelling units per acre. Other than that, the design, the placement, and the height of the building and the building materials are nearly identical to the one that was previously approved. This is, again, a proposed planned unit development, so in a sense, it is a, the action is a recommendation to the City Commission for formal approval of the rezoning of the additional parcels to PUD and to amend the approved PUD plan to expand the building. The contingencies of the, if the board does wish to recommend approval of the plan to the City Commission, we have a list of contingencies within pages nine and 10 of our report. Those contingencies are fairly similar, in most cases identical, to the ones that were required of the previous development. We don't have anything further to add than what is already within our staff report, but if the Commission has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any question for Mr. Hedges at this point? Ms. Douglas?
Yes. How the, I can't find this in the document right here. With the alley is 30 feet, and yet with the expansion of this building throughout the length of the block, there's a reference here that the, that makes the alley into 130-foot by driveway?
What that refers to is, under the previous approval, the previous plan, the, can I get the plan to come up on? Get the sheets to come up on. This plan includes the addition of parallel parking spaces along the rear of the alley, similar to how we have parallel parking up and down Washington on Main Street. What they're proposing to do is put those along the rear lot line right next to the alley, using the alley essentially as a street to access those parallel parking spaces. We don't have any provisions in the zoning ordinance to provide parallel parking in that type of fashion on private property using the right-of-way for, to get in and out of them. You know, parallel parking is typically placed in the right-of-way, and it's not considered off-street parking. This is kind of a strange animal. It's, the parking spaces are going to be on the site on private property, but yet the alley is going to then serve as the access to get in and out of those spaces. So what essentially it does is turn the alley width along there into one big driveway to get in and out of the parking spaces. The Director felt that that should be treated no differently than someone trying to put a driveway to the alley to get in and out of, you know, other off-street parking spaces. It's been, it's been a similar issue that's come up with other developments that had access from a rear alley but had like 90-degree parking spaces off the alley, use the alley for, to access to get in and out of those. Many of those were required to either get a variance from the zoning Board of Appeals or have a waiver granted as part of their PUD or conditional rezoning for the driveway width requirement to use the alley essentially as a driveway and maneuvering aisle.
And so, but what is the width? I mean, the current alley is 30 feet wide with the addition of parking spaces that can extend it to be 130 feet. Oh, here it says the alley length. Somewhere it said that width.
Yeah, the alley has an actual width of 18 feet, and then along the west rear lot line of the property adjacent to the alley, they would have nine feet of width for the parallel parking spaces. So essentially, the driveway is being defined as the entire length of the alley from Harrison to Parent. And that's where the, that figure is coming from, I think of 100 and...
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hedges at this point? I got a quick question. Sorry, I haven't reviewed this as thoroughly as I normally do, but with 77 units, how is the parking requirements are 106 spaces? Are they providing enough?
Well, all dwelling units require two off-street parking spaces per unit. So with 77 units, they're looking at having to provide, is it 154 off-street parking spaces? What they're proposing is a lower ratio than that. They're proposing 112 parking spaces. That equals about 1.45 spaces per unit. It's about the similar ratio that was approved with the last development. It also did not provide the minimum amount of parking that is required in the ordinance, but as part of a PUD, the Planning Commission can waive or modify those standards and approve a lesser ratio of off-street parking. So the previously approved plan, it had 26 dwelling units, which would have required 52 off-street parking spaces. That approved development was approved with 36 spaces, a ratio of 1.38 per unit. So actually, this one is going to have a bit more off-street parking. It had 1.45 spaces per unit.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hedges at this point? At this point, we usually listen to the petitioner first, I think, is what we do? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can we hear from the petitioner on this item?
Is this?
I think there's a keyhole in your notes. Yeah. Yours is just frozen.
Ah, it's not frozen. It's... Ah, you can't tell either. Try it. It might be missing something. Should I just give it right here?
Sure. Could you introduce yourself, where you're from, and tell us about your project?
Sure. Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Gabe Rubin, and I am here tonight on behalf of Washington on Harrison LLC, the owner and developer of the proposed PUD, The Urbane on Harrison, a 77-unit residential apartment building. Our team has been working very hard over the past year and a half to acquire and assemble the two properties that span one city block along South Washington Avenue between Parent and Harrison Avenue. We are very excited about this development and are 100% committed to this development as well as future developments within the city of Royal Oak. I am here tonight to present the site plan for the PUD, which will include a building overview, the market, the property management, and the benefits that this development will bring to the city of Royal Oak. The Urbane on Harrison will be a two-story building with above-grade level parking. The ground floor will have secured and covered parking, and residents will enjoy several amenities within the building, including a lounge and lobby area on the ground floor, dedicated package delivery room, and several bike storage areas. In addition, residents can enjoy an exercise room on the second floor, a lounge area on the second floor, and there will be uncovered terraces on the second and third floor that are surrounded by residential units. The unit mix will consist primarily of one-bedroom units. The design of the building, as you could see, the design of the building is sleek, modern, and urban. Together with our architectural firm, Alexander Bogarts and Associates, we have designed a spectacular building. As you can see on the rendering, the ground floor consists of the same elements that you see on the second and third floor, bringing the human scale to the property. The building will have a green stormwater retention system. Rain will be collected from underground tanks. Once the tanks have been filled, our management company that owns and operates water tanker trucks will then pump the water into their truck and, which will be used to irrigate the landscaping on the property, as well as irrigate the city-owned property in the surrounding The Urbane on Harrison will attract young professionals. The location of The Urbane on Harrison is within walking distance of downtown Royal Oak, within walking distance of Holiday Market, and easy access to all major thoroughfares. The unit size, modern design, new construction, great amenities, great location are all very appealing to the younger professional. According to the residential target market analysis that was conducted by Land Use USA LLC for the city of Royal Oak, each year, there are 1,333 new households that are moving to the city of Royal Oak. Of those 1,333 new households, 85% are likely to be renters. This report clearly identifies that this type of development is in demand. The Urbane on Harrison will be professionally managed by our business partner, Urbane Management Company. Urbane Management Company currently owns and operates 11 properties within the city of Royal Oak, and they have an absolute success track record when it comes to managing apartments throughout Metro Detroit. As I mentioned earlier, we strongly believe that this development will add tremendous value to the city of Royal Oak and the surrounding properties. Once the building has been developed, the property values of the surrounding properties will increase. The landscape of the Washington Avenue corridor as you see it now will be shaped and changed, and hopefully, that will spur new and exciting growth along the Woodward, or along the Washington Avenue corridor. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present our site plan this evening. Mark Abanatha and Alex Bogarts will now answer any questions that you may have regarding the site plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alex Bogarts, Architect, Petitioner, and Mark Abanatha, one of our senior VPs at the firm, and Registered Architect is here with me as well. I just have a couple of very brief things I want to point out to the board. The, the design and the way we have set up the building, and as you look at it in plan form, is like a capital letter E, where the long side is along South Washington, and the shorter legs are along the alley. We went through a great number of different studies when we had the entire, or when, I should say, when our clients had the entire parcels assembled, as to the best way to put the property together. One of the things we wanted to do, and we had heard from our previous submission to the Commission, was we wanted to be respectful of our neighbors to the west across the alley. And one way to do that is to minimize the amount of building that is on the alley and to minimize the number of windows and balconies that are on that alley too that would affect the, our neighbors to the west. By having the long side of the building, the main part of the, part of the building along Washington Avenue, we achieved that by having the short west end of the building, just legs that open onto the large court, so we've minimized the number of terraces to the west. We have 11 patios per floor now that front along South Washington, and we have essentially, that are right on the property line, on the east property line, whereas on the west property line, there are actually no terraces or balconies at all that face directly onto the neighbors. The ones that are, the balconies are there, are actually inset to the innermost part of the, the E-formatted building. Important thing to note is that we have, again, to try to listen to what our, what we were trying to do for our neighbors, we have abandoned the thought of the rooftop terrace. We have the two garden-level terraces that are at the second floor, and the rooftop terrace is not a part of our proposal at this time. We're very excited about the property. It's, as Gabe said, it's, it's an, it's an exciting development to have an entire block frontage along South Washington between Parent and Harrison, and we, Mark and I are here happy to help. Any questions, answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the petitioner at this point? Mr. Klooster?
Yeah, I, you spoke to the residential market analysis. Was any market analysis done on this large parcel being a mixed-use building as opposed to strictly residential?
Hi, my name's Albert Ludwig. I'm one of Gabe's partners, and we look closely at the potential of mixed use, and we believe that this parcel can't support it because there's no parking. There's no city parking available, with the exception of the spaces on Washington. I think there's 10 or 11 spaces there. There's no parking structure within reasonable walking distance, and to put retail or mixed use on the first floor would eliminate the parking that we're proposing. And realistically, to get a retail component in there would eliminate the residential units. You could have a standalone Coney Island or something like that, but there's really no parking available to provide for mixed use. We also don't believe that, in our minds, that this is the suitable location for mixed use. Mixed use is four blocks to the north, and we thought that in discussing with the different people from the city that this was going to be a good opportunity for a, kind of a merger between what's happening on the freeway and what's happening downtown, and kind of a blend property that's provided. So we don't have a professional opinion on that. We didn't go to a planner, but, you know, we're real estate developers for, between us, you know, between the group that's part of this partnership, we have over 200 years of experience, and it just doesn't work. We looked at it several times, but it just doesn't work.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Casada?
You've got listed here LED accent lighting. Can you tell me a little bit about that? You've got a note on here? On, on drawing five, sheet number five, in the notes? I just wonder, I didn't see where it was called out, but you've got it in the notes.
I'm sorry to say, we do not know where that note came from. We don't plant any LED accent lighting on the building.
Okay, good.
It's all classic lighting.
All right. But... All right. But another question. The cornices are listed as clad wood frame. Clad in what way? What do you got up there?
Well, we have, at the rooftop cornice, we're going to have both metal panel and on the cap of that we'll either do in a metal panel cap or we'll do edge it in wood. We will have that detail refined before you...
But it's not going to be EPIS or something. It's going to be metal.
Oh, no, we're not using, there's no EPIS on the building at all.
You have some good quality materials here. I like the, this view that you're showing us is the view from my office window. That's what I will see if it gets built. Looks like you have some good materials planned for that, and appreciate that.
What is the general cladding of the side of the building? As you said, metal panels? The cladding over the majority of the...
There's metal panel up here. This is horizontal metal panel. We have metal panel here. This is going to be a composite metal panel here. Block, we have block and brick details as well. Black framed glass. And then we're accenting the private residential balconies with the yellow highlight color and glass panels on the delfin railings.
I'd like to add that when we had the opportunity to expand the design of this project, we looked at all of the items that were discussed at the previous meetings, both with this board and with the city commission. And in virtually every step of the way, we think this is an improved plan. It has better parking. It has, the entrance is no longer off the alley. It's off of the side street. It has, virtually on every debatable issue that previously was approved, we think we've made it better. So that's one of the reasons that we're so excited about this plan. It's better than the last one, which we thought was great, so.
One more question.
Mr. Casada?
Just to clarify, speaking about that, the parking situation, now if I understand the plan correctly, is there's only one entrance off Harrison. Is that correct? And you've got a door there, though. Now you're going to have a security door there? Tell us about that.
That's correct. There's one entrance off of Harrison. The previous plan on the smaller building had one entrance off the alley. There is also pedestrian entrance.
I don't remember there being a security door before. Is that, that's a new feature, no?
I don't think so. I think we always had that.
Did you have it? Okay.
We are proposing a secure parking area, yes.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
The terraces, are those a public space for the people at least whose units are on those levels?
That's correct. The terraces are just for the residents only. There won't be any quote-unquote "public access" to those terraces. It's all off of the, you have to go through the secure entrance on South Washington, take the elevator up to the corridor, and then have access through that to the, one of the amenity areas to get onto those terraces.
But it's a leisure area? That is, the surface will be such that people who have units on that floor that open out on it can use it as their lawn?
Absolutely correct. That's exactly correct, yes.
Second question, and I do appreciate the reduction of the rooftop terrace. I mean, we didn't have a lot of issues with that here at the table in the past, but I know there were some public objections to it, so we're pleased that you were able to do that. One of the issues that did come up in the previous approval was the issue of putting parking along Washington. And I personally do appreciate the efforts that you took in your second go-around to provide better screening for that. But did you give any consideration to the fact that now, instead of just a single, a small building with parking along Washington, you've got parking along an entire block in Washington?
You referring to the parking that is the public, the city?
No, the ground-level parking in your building. So, I mean, what you've got, you have no activity at the street level at all. All you've got is parking that's masked.
You're referring to under the building?
Yes.
Yes. And the question again for that parking is for...
Did you give any consideration to alternatives other than putting a wall of parking along an entire block on Washington?
Oh, absolutely. One of the main things we have, do we have the building plan mark in large scale with us? In the building, if we can go, let me, I'll just show on the rendering.
I'm having a lot of difficulties with our system tonight. I'll try and get it back if I can, but this is, our system is not cooperating this evening.
And this section down here, those are the two most outer portions of the building. These other sections recess in, so there's a large landscape areas that are in those recesses in the building. In other words, although we go from Parent all the way to Harrison, the building isn't one continuous flat mass. It has, it runs for section, then it inserts, and then at the center of the building where the entrances, it pops out again. And even when there pops out, it still doesn't come out all the way to the right-of-way of Harrison. And then these step back in again. So those, these areas, the insert areas, will have an amassing of landscaping in front of it. So the building is not right up on top of the sidewalk, not as you classically see in urban building. Although the scale of the building and the context of the building is certainly urban in its design intent, we brought into those areas that are under the parking, those parking areas are well set back, physically set back from South Washington. Does that answer your question?
And then, so what is in the areas that come, that project as opposed to those that recede? What is, like, right where you're pointing? What is that?
Behind, behind some of these areas, we have spaces for either bike storage or meter rooms or private storage for units. Because the parking, although the building, for example, here is right at this area on the east face of the building is essentially going to put the property line. The parking doesn't start until almost eight feet back from that. So then actually at this first corner here, this entire section is where the bike storage area is. And then we've taken and created that, the entire side along South Washington is also the previous questions that the petitioner came up with. To give us a detail so it has a sense of a one composite building.
There's also a lounge at the entrance. There's a lobby and then a lounge behind it, and a computer room proposed for the residents. So there's other, some of the amenities are right there along Washington on the level of the parking.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions?
I did have one, and it does serve to parking. You, and I ask this of Mr. Hedges. You know, the normal calculation is two spots per unit, and I know you've improved it from the last proposal to be a slightly better density ratio per unit. How did you come up with your calculation of what's necessary for parking on these?
Well, the biggest thing is that it is predominantly, as Gabe mentioned earlier, this is predominantly a one-bedroom building, one-bedroom apartment building. There are only eight of all the 77 that are actually two-bedroom units. So having a near 1.45 to one parking, a one-bedroom unit is, by and large, classically have only one car. There are, there certainly will be couples living maybe in the one, where there'll be two cars, but those will be picked up by that 0.45 offset. We're confident in that number. Even the studies that we've had and even seen from the city studies, that is a format that is coming more and more, becoming more and more frequent where we're taking down the parking criteria today and multifamily from where it was in the past. We're very comfortable with this.
Do you have some experience from the management aspect of other, you have a bunch of Urbain developments in the city already? Can you speak to like how bad or good you're parked up in terms of your capacity?
We can do that. We also engaged the services of a professional traffic engineer, both on the first go-around and this time. And the traffic engineer provided us with a traffic study, which you have, I believe Doug has it. And their recommendation was based on national averages of this type of development. It was about 1.2 unit, 1.2 parking spaces per unit was all that was necessary, and that we have a good excess of parking spaces even during peak times. I'll let Gabe speak to the other Urbain properties.
So regarding your question about Urbain and some of the more, you know, urban properties that they have, based on my conversations with Eric Brown and Fred Blackman, who are both owners and operators, the properties that they have downtown Royal Oak, I mean, because they're serving the younger professionals, what they're seeing is one car per unit, and a lot of their renters ride their bikes, get Uber, get Lyft. And so to answer your question, no, it is not, parking has not been an issue at the Urbain properties in the downtown Royal Oak area.
Okay, thank you, guys. Any other questions from the side? I guess at this point I'd open it up for the public hearing. If you want to speak on this particular, could you move your plan there? I can't see the audience. Thanks. If you want to speak on this particular development, wait till you're recognized by me and state your name and address. And I think we allow people three minutes per discussion. Anybody want to speak on this development tonight?
My name is Tony Snow. I live at 343 West Harrison. I also own apartments in downtown Royal Oak, three different buildings. And I've found that 90% of the time, if you have a one-bedroom apartment, you have one person or one car in there. If you have a two-bedroom, you have two cars. So the issue I have is, or a question I have is, is this development replacing the last one that went in? Or is this separate from the other parking lot building? I don't know. I'm confused. I asked back here, and he said it's a brand-new building, other than the other one. I thought this was incorporating the whole block.
This is incorporating the whole block.
Okay, all right. Well, then what I was going to say is I think the parking is an issue a little bit because I have tenants, too. They park on the street, and we park half a block down sometimes to park in our areas. So Royal Oak already has a parking problem north of Lincoln, and I think you ought to be cognizant of not creating one south of Lincoln. It's not an issue now, but it could be as these developments appear. So I think it's 80, 79 one-bedrooms, that's 79 spots. They should be okay at 112. And the issue I had too is the one, the ground-level parking, they had an exhaust fan that they had said that they were going to have at their last development. I'm not sure if that's incorporated in this development, but it was pointing directly west. And I would think any exhaust fan for fumes inside that ground-level parking should go up versus out west to other properties west of them. So I'm not sure if that's part of the development now that they've refigured everything.
We'll find out.
But it might be a good question to ask them and see what's going on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this particular development? Seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing and bring it back to the side. Could you answer the gentleman's question about the exhaust fan and how you're taking care of that?
Our plan is essentially to have an open-air parking space. And that, by the standards of construction that we have to have, it used to be 50% of the perimeter had to be fully clear open. Those standards have dropped down now, so we can have the areas off the alley and off the sides of the building that are more open that allow for free flow of air. In addition to that, we will have what is an exhaust fan that will only be keyed in by a CO2 detector. If, for some reason, the air that would normally traverse in and out of the building isn't moving one day for maybe a hot summer day, for example, and there are a lot of cars were sitting there running and moving and out, that fan then would kick up to exhaust. But by and large, they are very low-operation type of units.
Where is that fan located and which way is it pointing?
Well, it's going to be, it would be pointing out to the alley. And it would be, we haven't, you know, that's a part of our mechanical-electrical drawings that we have not developed yet, but we would plan, that would be the most logical place somewhere along our west property line, along the alley.
Does typically have deflectors to where it doesn't blow directly across the alley? It will direct the air in an upward fashion?
That's exactly, you can hear they have the louvers turned up or turned down, whichever. There'll be a fan, there'll be a series of long metal louvers in front of it for open. Even that, those louvers will provide air moving through there even when the fan is not operating. We just haven't located it exactly yet.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? I particularly like the development, the aesthetics of the design. I like the fact that the ground floor doesn't look like it's the parking lot. It's very well-hidden. And the recessed, the variance in features from the setback, I think is a very nice design and materials look good. My only heartburn is the parking. When you do deviate from that in reference parking studies, I haven't seen one on that. And would like to see more hard data on, you know, existing units. You know, what you say sounds good, but you're going to tell me what I want to hear. Just a second. And, you know, it's something that we passed last time at the deviation it is. And, you know, maybe two is too high, one is not enough, and somewhere in between is right. But the density of this unit is pretty steep, and that would be my only concern. And I'll wait to hear from any other comments or a motion from other commissioners. Mr. Casada?
Well, just to follow up on the parking, I'm going to, as I'm sitting here, there's another question for the petitioner I'd like to ask really quick. Okay, so you've got 1.45 parking spaces per unit. You can't have a lease that says you get 1.45. So how, if you know, how is Urbain going to deal with that with the renters?
Well, here's the way we did the math on it. We have 77 units, and our total parking count is 112. If you were to take every one-bedroom unit and assume it's going to have one car to it, that's 77 cars obviously. If you took our eight two-bedroom units and assumed every one of those had two cars, that's another 16, that's 93. So we still have 19 other spaces unassigned. So some of the one-bedrooms may, could even have an additional car to them. Keep in mind that all the spaces we're talking about here are spaces that are dedicated to the units, and they are, other than the units that are along the alley, are only accessed through a card or through a key operator to get into the building. So we feel we have, you know, we think we are in very, very good shape for parking because even as was mentioned just earlier, we expect some of the one-bedroom units won't even have, will not have, be using cars because we are so close to transportation. Some of the things we found out on early, some of our early marketing.
Yeah, I guess my question goes to the contractual relationship between the renters and the owner. I don't, I know our ordinance says two per unit, but does that, maybe Mr. List knows, does that prevent the landlord from entering a lease with the renters? You only get one space. And that would be one way to deal with it, that's all I'm saying.
Be classically, there would be assigned parking on the building. If you took all the units and you assign one car for the one-bedrooms and two cars to the two-bedrooms, it's only 93 cars. We still have, you know, additional 19 extra open spaces on it, so.
Well, there'll be visitors.
Well, the visitors can park on, the visitors won't have access into the parking. So they would be parking on South Washington or nearby open parking space.
Sir, you've had your time to speak up.
Okay, thank you for answering the question, so I'd appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
May I?
Mr. Douglas?
I don't know that he's answered the question. I mean, the question is, do you write leases that stipulate you may only have one car? We're only going to give you one sticker or one key. We're only going to give you one sticker or one key for, per unit?
To answer your question, I, I don't know the specifics of how the lease reads in terms of, you know, assigned parking and, and cars. That is something that I can get back to you on. But I, I don't know the specifics of the lease and how their leases are, are worded. I'm assuming that the one-bedrooms will have, be assigned one parking space and the two-bedrooms will be assigned two.
I don't believe there's going to be a restriction, though, in the leases that says if you have a one-bedroom, you can only have one car. That's the reason we have the extra 19 spaces. But as developers and owners of the property, it's important to us to make sure that we can lease these units. In order to lease them, we need to satisfy the tenants. In order to satisfy the tenants, we have to give them adequate parking. Otherwise, nobody's going to want to live there. So we look at this just as closely as you do, even though it's from a different angle. Because with inadequate parking, it could choke the leasing off. And we've done market studies on this and other properties. And we, we are very sensitive to making sure that we have enough parking. Otherwise, we're going to have empty units, which we don't want.
Fair enough.
And I, I just want to mention one thing. There, there was an updated parking and traffic study. Doug, I, I sent it to you and Joseph. It was Fleece Vanderbrink. I can send it to you again.
Yeah, I, I looked through the file. I did not see a, a copy of it. So if you have it, send it, email me a copy. Because it's, we got it, it didn't get saved to the folder for your application.
So just, just to summarize the updated report, in this updated parking study, there will be a surplus of 21 spaces during the weekday peaks and 34 spaces during the weekend peak periods. Which, which was greater than, than the first study on, on the first development that we had completed.
So, sir, you had your, your moment to, to give your comments, so we're going to keep it formal here?
Doug, I, I will email that again. I'm not sure what happened, but I, I'll, I'll send that to you tonight.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Doug, you're looking for a two-parter on this?
Well, it's not necessarily a two-part motion, but there is a choice before the commission. It is a planned unit development. So you do have the option to review this as a preliminary PUD plan. If you would like to see it a second time before it goes to the City Commission for formal review, or you can review it as a final PUD plan. In which case, your action would be a recommendation forwarded to the City Commission. So the first decision to make is, you know, do you want to see this a second time before it goes to the City Commission or not? If you do, then the proper motion would be for, you know, approval of a preliminary PUD plan. That would then give the petitioner the, the opportunity to, within six months, apply for a final review. And it would be back before you at a future meeting. If you feel all of your issues have been addressed and you're comfortable, you know, recommend, making a recommendation to the City Commission, then the action would be to recommend, you know, rezoning of the additional four parcels to PUD and approval, recommendation of approval for the final PUD site plan. I'd like to again draw your attention to the contingencies that were recommended by staff on pages nine and 10 of our staff report. The first sub-paragraph A describes what I just listed, gives the commission the option. Do you want to take action on either a preliminary or a final PUD plan? The second sub-paragraph B, it lists all the waivers that have been requested to zoning ordinance standards as part of the proposed plan. Sub-paragraph C lists the three revisions that staff have recommended be made before the project is forwarded to the City Commission. And then D through F are our typical boilerplate contingencies that are listed with any site plan approval. I do want to draw the commission's attention to one of the contingencies recommended by the director concerning the rooftop terraces or patios as proposed by the petitioner. They do have those on the rear of the building along the west rear lot line. And those terraces open toward the public alley. The director had recommended considering having those reversed so the terraces would open towards South Washington Avenue along the front of the building instead. I know that was not, hasn't been brought up this evening, but it may require some additional discussions. If the commission does not agree with that, obviously you can strike that contingency. The second one regarded the locating of a, specifying the location of utility poles within the alley so we can get a final accurate count on the number of parallel parking spaces that could be placed within, alongside the alley. And the third is any other contingencies that the changes that the commission may want to see before the plan eventually does get to the City Commission. So what we're looking for is a decision, do you want to see this again or not? If so, the proper motion would be for a preliminary PUD plan. If you're comfortable sending this to the City Commission, then the proper motion is for a recommendation on a final plan. And then decide which, if any, of the other contingencies the commission would like to revise or modify.
Can you show me the terraces that you're speaking to on the west side of the building?
Yeah, it's the open sections. This is the front, the building facing Washington Avenue. This is the rear, facing the alley, then Harrison and Parent. Those are the best, I don't think we have a, they show very well on the elevations. There are these areas here.
Can the petitioner describe how the, the terraces that face the west side of the building are screened from the alley?
Yes, on the second floor.
Can't reach that high?
This is what I was referring to either about how these, if you look, if you can see, here's our corridors of the units. And these are the units that come into a unit here, go into a unit this way. So this whole end of the leg here is without closed windows. There are no windows looking on to the west, around to the alley. These units open up on this. Now, these units open up onto the terrace. The ones there, even here at the second floor, there is a lounge area here and here's not even a terrace per se. But these are all the terraces along South Washington. So it's just this area we're referring to, the two terraces. And I think the ones that we're referring to that look directly west would be these one, two, three, four terraces. So those four terraces would be looking directly west. These other terraces look inward onto the, onto the terrace area proper.
Is that terrace area walled off from the alley?
I'm sorry?
What's the elevation look like down the, the west wall of the terrace?
Well, what it, what it is, it's, and we can go back to elevation a moment, which is a little difficult to read. But right along this edge here, we're, we will have a railing there. We have to have a protective railing on that space anyway. And what we've thought about doing is along that area is doing this, which is shown here. Doing those railings in glass there so they really will, they'll contain any, any noise that might be generated from the terraces. It won't spill that noise, it won't spill the alley. The upper floor, the third floor units do not, would have to come downstairs, come through the common area to get out onto that terrace. So we, we, we really expect the terraces to be really just almost privately used for each of the eight units and within either of those interior court spaces. So if you were to go back to the plan again for a moment, one of the things I wanted to point out was that on South Washington right now, if I remember, we have 11 terraces here that look directly out onto South Washington. Where the building would be reversed, you have 11 units right on top, looking right at our neighbors to the west. In this format, we've minimized it because these walls, those three sections of walls are blank. This is over 65 feet back here to these terraces. So those terraces that are, that are neighbors are way to the, to the east of location. We think this in, in respect to our neighbors and to what we want to do from a, from a product standpoint to be delivered to the consumer, this is the right format for us. You know, that South Washington will always have traffic noise to it. And we want to, we have 11 units on South Washington where we have just eight per terrace on, on the question. Did I answer your question?
You did. Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner? Guys looking to make a motion? Mr. Casada?
I would move, first of all, let me clarify. I don't think we need to see this again. If we're not going to have them flip the plan, and I'll make a comment on that a second, then we don't need to see it again. If you guys think otherwise, you let me know. But I would like to move to approve the rezoning for the PUD and make a recommendation to the commission for approval, incorporating all the listed contingencies except for C1.
C1, where they flipped the terrace thing that we just talked about?
Yes.
Great, thank you for clarifying. We have a motion. Is there support? I'm sorry, Ms. Douglas.
No, that's not, that's, that's.
Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
Silence.
Okay. I can't support, can I? Yes, Chair? I guess not. Motion dies for lack of support. Looking for another motion?
I'll, I'll go.
Go ahead.
I'm going to move to deny the PUD. And with a second, I'll explain my thinking.
We have a motion to deny the PUD. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Yes, Ms. Douglas.
So 30,000-foot view. Developer can approach a development in one of two ways. They can, one of three ways. They can abide by all of the zoning. They can submit an application which requires zoning variances. Or they can seek a planned unit development, which wraps all of that up into one vote, requires the approval of the City Commission. But it's a, it's an approach that solves a lot of problems in many ways. And, and we as a planning commission and we as a city commission have been very open to planned unit development applications. And should this motion succeed, the developer can certainly go back and go through the, the normal zoning channels that they might. We are required to, or the applicant for a PUD must demonstrate all of the following criteria as a condition to being entitled to PUD treatment. And there's a list of conditions here. One of which is a recognizable and material, material benefit to the ultimate users of the project and to the community where such benefit would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without application of the PUD. This is an area where we, as a city, would like to see mixed uses. More variety on the street. And it's an area that is ripe for redevelopment in many ways. And Mr. Klooster asked the question earlier, had you considered a mixed use on this property? And I think if we deny this PUD, the developer still has opportunities perhaps to develop it in other ways. I certainly, I personally would not look askance at more height if it also included some mixed uses. Furthermore, the unbroken line of not anything along the ground level, whether it's parking or bike storage, landscaping notwithstanding, I think doesn't contribute to the walkability of the street. I think it puts a wall up on the street that I do not find pleasing. And those are the reasons that I have moved to deny the planned unit development.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second those, those comments. Just from an urban planning standpoint, having an entire block with only one door on it and dedicating the entire block to parking at grade is, is really detrimental for walkability and the type of variety that you need to see at the street level for a successful urban fabric. Again, the, you know, something like this, the way the, the mixed-use ordinance is written, you know, a brownstone or something that, that puts doors on the street is, is going to be more successful in, in this sort of urban setup at achieving kind of the, the intent and the character of what, what the ordinance suggests. Again, a, a whole block for parking is difficult. When it was a third of the block, I think it was, it was tolerable. It achieved bringing density to the area and accomplishing a, a goal and a need with residential units. But when it's at the scale of a whole block, I think it's, it's a more difficult pill to swallow.
How many?
Sir, sir, it's actually on this side of the table while we have a motion. Could you have a seat, please? We're, we're still discussing.
We'd like to table this.
We're still going to have to vote on this motion that we have in front of us?
Is there a procedure for table?
We're still going to vote on this, on this motion beforehand. Thank you. I, I won't be supporting the motion. I like the variance in the, what we approved last time. I, I do see this as a, an expansion of that. It, it seems like a, a good use of the area. I, I don't, there's mixed use around it. I, I don't think proposing that we keep it in that fashion is appropriate. I, I think it's a good plan. I, I won't be supporting this motion. Any other comments? Mr. Casada?
Yeah, I, I like the plan. I understand the, the desire for mixed use. I have to tell you, like I said, I'm kitty-cornered from this building. And I think there has to be some deference to the, to the owner's response to the marketplace. We didn't really talk about this, but the building that's right next to us has commercial space and it sat vacant for, I don't know, nine years? We just got some insurance people in there. I don't know what the market is, but I do know that those spaces did not rent for, for almost a decade. So I don't know if this is really, it, I think it's up to the developer to some extent. We, we can kibitz and hopefully we make a better, make an impression and make a better project. But I think that's what happened here. I think they came back with a better project. I like the way it looks better than the other one. I think that this is an area where residential, there is a lot of residential down here. I, I understand also the issue about being hesitant about the parking on the ground floor. But there's, if you're not going to put another story on, which is an expense, of course, a huge expense, there's an element of privacy there for the people who live in this space, and some people are going to like that. So while I, while I understand the concerns that were expressed, I think it's a, it's an improvement on the other project. And so I'm not going to support the current motion either.
Ms. Douglas?
And I will acknowledge that the validity of the target market analysis, we do need more multifamily housing in Royal Oak. And I'm not saying that I demand mixed use. I can't demand mixed use on this site. But I am definitely looking for an urban design, as Mr. Klooster so eloquently put it, that is more in keeping with a walkable community and the kind of streetscape we desire.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
No. So we have two to two?
I have a question. Does this require a majority of the quorum or a majority of the commission?
Any decision made by the planning commission, except for items involving the master plan, require just a simple majority of the quorum? So technically, the two-to-two vote, nothing happened. What we will do then is the case is effectively tabled until the next regular meeting. We will place the item on that agenda under old business for review. And, you know, that meaning hopefully we have an odd number of commissioners present and a formal action can be made.
Can that be, should that be done formally? Can that be, should that be done formally to table it? Or is that just what's going to happen anyway?
I'll defer that, Mr. List. Should they make a motion to formally table or not?
Motion to adjourn the matter, not to table. The current motion before the commission has failed. So that you can take up any other action that you want. If they can bring this back to the next agenda, then adjourn this item to the next agenda.
Are we allowed to ask the petitioner for their thoughts?
That's within discretion of the body.
After the motion?
Well, we made two motions. One of the motions was to accept the plan and recommend it as it was. That went down. The other one was to deny. That went down. There is a third possibility. That's to come back in six months with a new version of the plan. But that, I don't know that that's something that the petitioner shouldn't be heard on.
Well, if we do, if a motion to adjourn to the next meeting or whenever they can bring a new plan passes, we can certainly give the petitioner an opportunity to do a little back and forth about what we're expecting. But I'd rather see that motion happen before we start a discussion here.
Motion to adjourn the item.
I have a motion to adjourn the item. Is there support?
Support.
We have support by Mr. Quesada. Any more in discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is adjourned. We'd like to hear some of your comments about what you heard tonight and what you could move forward with.
Sure. And again, I do apologize for interrupting. As I mentioned in the presentation, we have been working very, very hard over the past year and a half. One of the things that I didn't tell you guys about was just the history of this, the acquisition of the properties. And it has not been easy. When I first sat down with the planning department, they were ecstatic that we were going to be developing buttons and the adjacent property. And I think based on my conversations, they're still ecstatic. Regarding the comments that you've made on the mixed use and wanting to see retail, as Mr. Quesada pointed out, is the building next door to his building has, most of the spaces have been sitting vacant. I don't want to stand up here and go back and forth and argue, but we feel very, very strongly that having retail at this location just does not work. Now, if you said we're going to build a city-owned parking lot, we'd be more than happy to go back to the drawing board and incorporate retail. But because there's no parking for retail, it does not work for this development. And Mr. Klooster, it sounded like you, you know, when you made the, supported the motion to deny, it sounded like some of your comments were changing certain aspects of the building. Instead of a complete denial, I would much rather have discussed some of the things that, you know, besides just putting retail there, some of the things that we could do to...
Sir, I'm going to ask you to kind of wrap this up.
Okay.
We're going to, we want you to take back some of what you've heard tonight.
It's excellent. We'll do, thank you very much. We'll come back to try to address some of the questions that members have come up with.
Okay, great. And if you could also provide that parking study and stuff that you did.
We will. We're going to, we'll do as well. Petitioner studies. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, sir. Mr. Hedges moving on to new business item two. I guess we have public hearing, SP 180102, amendment to conditional rezoning site plan, SP 1210-23.
Yes, this application is an amendment to a previously approved site plan that was approved as part of a conditional rezoning of the property at 3425 Star Road. Two thousand twelve, or I believe it was finally in two thousand thirteen, a conditional rezoning was approved to redevelop this site into a medical office. It was previously a service facility for DTE Energy. It was one of their service facilities and substations. The site has subsequently been redeveloped into medical offices at this site. And the petitioner is continuing to do so. They've recently submitted an application to modify a portion of the building along the west front of the building, which faces the interior of the parking lot. The modifications were extensive enough that it was felt that an amendment to the approved site plan was required. And that is what it is before you this evening. Essentially, they're looking to modify a few of the vacant units available for medical offices within the building to establish a mobile MRI facility within that unit. They were converting a portion of the facade that's being modified with the installation of an overhead door to allow the mobile MRI unit to move in and out of the building. Again, since this is part of, the site plan's part of a conditional rezoning, this would be a recommendation to the city commission for final approval. The site, then, if approved by the commission this evening, would then be attached to an amendment to the conditional zoning agreement for the property. And that would need to be reviewed and approved by the city commission. Our contingencies of approval, should the commission wish to approve the amended site plan or listed on page two of our staff report, none of them are any, involve any significant, significantly new or any modification. They're mostly those that were included with the previous site plan approval and/or are either are just our normal boilerplate contingencies that we require of all site plans. So again, this is a recommendation to the city commission for an amended site plan that was part of a conditional rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. Any question for Mr. Hedges at this point from commissioners? Seeing none, as a petitioner here tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and gathered few. Dennis Cowan with Plunka Cooney on behalf of the petitioner. With me is Freeman Greer, who is the project architect, and also David McKay, who's a representative for Starwood Building. I kind of feel like I'm the institutional memory behind this project. Since I've been with it since the beginning, you may remember this was the DTE Energy facility. Had a lot of trucks coming and going every day. It's, the one good thing about the facility is it's totally enclosed, except for the entrance and exit by a brick wall. It's adjacent, of course, to our beautiful memorial park. But to be brief, because we're really here because of the mobile MRI, which will be backed into and will be totally enclosed. So there won't be any noise type of, or vibration, or any type of issue like that. That is pretty much the modern protocol with these machines because they have to be taken out for maintenance and upgrades and things of that nature. Also as well, moved to other locations. If you've been to the site, there are currently, because this part of the building has not been redone yet, you'll note that DeVita Dialysis, a national dialysis company, is in the northern part of the building. There's four doors there. When this is completed, only one will remain, and Freeman can talk about that. But there's really no changes in the footprint of the building. There's no changes in the parking, and parking has not been a problem at all. This is consistent with the medical office use. And it will be maintained in the same excellent condition that it's been brought to up to this point. And this will pretty much give us, what percentage of tenancy now? Is it eighty?
Almost eighty-five.
Almost eighty-five percent tenancy, which the, Dr. Basha, who you know is also a participant in Starwood Building, and he's well-known in the community. And they bought this building for the long haul. And they were very concerned about who would be the tenants, who would come in. And so they've been very, we have a national tenant with DeVita and now a local tenant with the MRI facility. So we're here to answer any of your questions. We appreciate the cooperation of the planning commission with the original site, then with an amendment which happened a few years ago, and now with this second amendment.
Thank you, Dennis. Did you want to describe the details?
Thank you, Freeman Greer, architect. You can see on the plan, missing kidney foundation would be in the unit here. The middle unit would be shared by the two units until the potential other tenant would take that. And then the end unit would be the MRI unit. And then the truck pulls into that space. And then it's serviced by the office and changing areas and waiting area for the MRI unit itself. The MRI unit, David, could you discuss that? How long that unit stays there and when it moves?
First of all, the unit is currently located in Royal Oak at 4045 West Thirteen Mile Road. And it's actually on the outside of a building. The whole idea was to get this space here to have the, have the unit actually to be transparent inside the unit. Truthfully, the unit right now is, as Freeman said, mobile, whereby it has to go to different locations. The owner of this MRI company is petitioning to get a unit that will be in the, in the site permanently. Okay, granted, it still has to be mobile, but, for servicing, but it will be to the point where it's not going to be going in and out. The times that it does go in and out will be very, very few. And when it does go in and out, it will be one, two o'clock in the morning. Okay, it won't be during the day.
Does it go in and out for servicing or actual patients?
Servicing. And depending on which unit he has, because I know he leases a couple of different ones, they go to different sites, okay? This should be one of the sites that he has. Actually, he's on a rotation with the units right now. But part of doing this is actually getting a unit that he can leave within the building.
And can you flip back to the site? The way this has been designed and what was originally approved, but there is no right turn out of this site. So we can't fit the truck into the neighborhood. The truck has to go out, back out to Woodward. So that's controlled. And that, a part of this is to make sure that that's completed. My understanding from planning is it wasn't completed precisely the way that it was intended to be. So we're going to take care of that so that that condition is controlled. Some of the other things that Dennis mentioned is that there are four overhead doors there now. The building does look industrial in its presence. So now, if you flip to the elevation, we're going to carry through the DeVita design with the brick and the simulated limestone, carrying that through where the overhead doors were and adding the glass like a professional office space. And then you'll have the one overhead door, which will change out and finalize and make it look like it's a part of a professional building. So the door will pretty much disappear into the wall. Going around to the south, that's a split face block. We'll use painted black on that and a fire cement board at the top to give that more of a professional look than the industrial look that it is now. Other than that, I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission for the petitioner at this point? Seeing none, could you guys have a seat for a minute? This is a public hearing. So I'll open it up. Is there anyone that cares to speak on this particular development this evening? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the side of the table for discussion or motion. Ms. Douglas?
I'm of approval of the amendment to the conditional rezoning site plan as proposed here.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Onto item F, other business, SV 180101, sign variance for our law office. Mr. Hedges?
This is a sign variance application for an office building at 520 North Main Street. They are seeking a variance to allow a second wall sign on the building's west front facade. Current regulations for the sign area that this building is located allows one wall sign per facade that faces a public street. The office tenant in this building currently has one wall sign on their west front facade facing Main Street. They are seeking to add a second wall sign that is over a, what appears to be a second or separate portion of the building toward the south, resulting in two separate wall signs on that facade. To have the second wall sign would require a variance from the planning commission. And that is what the petitioner is seeking.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hedges at this time? Seeing none, as the petitioner here this evening? Tell us about your sign variance and why you think it's a good idea.
Hello, I'm Mia Asta, representative from Gardner Signs. And our goal in industry standard is to, any sign we build, to make sure it's the best quality and to also help our customers promote their business. And with this sign, and if you look at the building, it does look like it is two separate buildings. The architecture of that building makes it look like there's two separate things going on there. And so we feel adding that second sign in that location would allow our customer the benefit of promoting their business in that. We also have landlord approval for that on his building to be able to do that. And we feel that if, when we originally submitted for application, permanent application, we did have it set with the rectangle and the allowable square footage, but it was off-center. I don't know if you have that picture, Doug?
What picture is it?
When we originally submitted, that the, and when we submitted to the actual allowable square footage in that, that the sign does not sit above that other section.
This one?
I don't, I can't see there. Let's see. No, I think that just had the building around it. That, that's the existing sign.
That's the north side, and that's...
Can I show you this?
Sure.
This is what was submitted. And this was the allowable square footage when we put the second sign on there. And as you can see, let me show it to you. As you can see, it doesn't architecturally look right on the building. So moving it over to where we proposed would allow the best look and go along with the architecture of the building.
Can you take a look there?
Sure. This is what we originally, that fit into the square footage after we put the rectangle around the signage and so forth. And moving it here will give the building the right architectural look with the sign that it should have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner, Ms. Douglas?
So this is not a separate tenant in the building?
No, no, it's, there's two businesses. He owns two businesses of two different legal names under one roof.
Are they, are they different entities? Are they different legal entities?
Yes.
But they, but they have one lease?
Correct.
Do you have more questions?
I have a question for Doug. So I just appreciate what the petitioner just mentioned. Is it, is it the case that if the signs were closer together, they would not be at variance? They would be allowed if they just pushed them together?
I mean, potentially. It's the information we got from the building division, which reviews the, you know, sign permit applic- reviews the, you know, sign permit application, that, you know, what was proposed, that going either option would have required a variance, either to have two separate signs or to consider them one, draw a rectangle around both and calculate the area. The information that we were given by the Building Division stated that that too would be over the maximum allowable sign area for one sign. So that too would have required a variance. I don't have, I mean, there is some data on the, the one they have up on the screen on your site plan. It's the second sheet. It says north in red letter, I don't know, excuse me, it says west in red letters at the top. Along the right-hand side, there was a calculation that drawing a rectangle around both signs, it was 129.24 square feet. Maximum allowable area is 100. So if they considered it one sign or two signs, either way, it was still going to need a variance according to the Building Division.
Okay, thank you. So, so as it sits, that's not, let me, let me ask another question. If there were two different tenants and a wall between these two, would this sign comply?
I hesitate to answer because we're not the ones that initially review sign permits as to whether they comply or not. But, you know, typically of multiple-unit buildings, that each unit is allowed one wall sign under the sign ordinance. So potentially, you know, if this were a, you know, entirely separate unit in the building, then it may not have needed a variance.
One more question. This may be a Mr. List question. I can imagine that there are people, developers in particular, that might have 16 business entities in one space. They're not allowed 16 signs, though.
This is correct. That's, it's usually an issue that comes up within the downtown or sign area three. It's usually not, an unusual issue to come up in buildings like this along the other commercial corridors where there are multiple business entities within what is either one building or one, or separate units within a single building.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Hedges, so I'm clear. If, if these two signs were right next to each other and 29 square feet smaller, it would be, it wouldn't be in front of us because it would be according to...
Yeah, potentially, but then that's not the information we have from the Building Division. What we have is what they were requesting.
Exactly.
The permit was denied and the variance was being sought for to add a second sign.
You know, to me, the architecture of the building looks like two separate, you know, businesses, and it does, to me, look in scale, so I particularly wouldn't have a problem with it as presented.
Any other comments, motion? Mr. Quesada?
Well, just to clarify, I, I don't have a problem with how it looks, to tell you the truth. I don't want something on the north side, by the way. I don't have a problem with how it looks. I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the fact that this is, in effect, in my mind, this second sign is more like a slogan or something. It is, if it's a separate company, it's a separate company. But is, is the standard one sign per tenant in their own unit, that's one thing. Because otherwise, you're setting a precedent here that somebody says, "I want another sign. I'm just going to start another LLC." I mean, this is, this is an issue for me. I don't know what the answer is, but that's, that's a concern for me.
Can I say so?
Hang on just a second. Mr. Kluster?
Looking at 607-6 of the zoning ordinance permitted signs in sign area two, segment A, wall signs provided the following conditions are met: one, one wall sign on each building facade, not one wall sign per tenant, with a maximum area of 100 square feet or 10% of the building facade, whichever is less. So the way the ordinance is written, it's not per tenant, it's per building facade.
There are other sections in the ordinance, though, I think, that do address multiple tenant buildings and other issues. Because I know that's, that's how they've been treated historically in the past, is each unit, for instance, if it's multi-unit shopping centers is a good example, that each unit is allowed one wall sign under that section that Mr. Kluster just cited.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You had mentioned regarding leasing and things like that. As I did mention, the landlord has approved for, you know, he's, he's in, acceptable of having two signs on his building.
That's Mr. Cooksey?
Yes.
Well, he's probably got 16 LLCs himself.
I personally don't know him. So...
I am aware of one particular example that I can think of, because I actually complained about it, but I, I was told by the planning director that it met guidelines was a building where I believe LA Insurance and RE/MAX, and it's downtown, and there are both businesses within one building. And I don't know, obviously, they're probably going to have two separate leases in that particular situation, but the signs looked large and, and there are two signs on all three sides of the building, and it, it, it didn't seem to fit. But I really can't speak to what the ordinance is at with any confidence, so I'll stop. Any other comments? Motion? Mr. Quesada, you look like you were starting.
I, I, you know what, I, I think that these are lawyers. They can probably come up a way to come back here and present this, so it's not, they probably have to present it. They can, they could probably do what needs to be done to come back here to the, to the Planning and the Building Department and reconfigure their, their circumstance there to make it compliant. And my struggle is whether or not I want to make them do it, because I don't want to set this precedent. And that's my struggle.
Ms. Douglas?
Well, we'll ease your struggle at all. If I move to deny this application because it, I mean, and I think Mr. Quesada's point is well made. I mean, at what point do we draw the line with multiple corporations owned by the same business in the same building? And I do think there's a way for them to modify the law offices of Barton Morris Sign to add the cannabis legal group information in a way that keeps you compliant.
We have a motion to deny. Is there support?
Support.
Two supporters. I heard Mr. Kluster first. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor deny, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's denied. All right, we're on to other business. Item two, SV 180102, sign variance for monument sign of multifamily development. Mr. Hedges?
Yeah, this is a sign variance request from a condominium development, 5005 to 5095 Crooks Road. The variance is to, A, allow two monument signs, B, allow a monument sign that does not have frontage on a major street, and C, to waive three and a half feet of the minimum required setback for a sign facing Crook Road, Crooks Road, and D, waive three feet, two inches of the minimum required 10-foot monument sign setback from Torque Avenue. Under the sign ordinance, multiple family developments are allowed, you know, one monument sign, provided their development has frontage on a major street, as defined within the sign ordinance. Under those terms, Crooks Road would meet the definition of a major street. However, Torque Avenue along the development's north side would not. So the available position for the development to place a monument sign is along Crooks Road. However, they are proposing two signs, one along Crooks and one along Torque. So first, they would need a variance to allow to have two signs, monument signs instead of one that is allowed under the ordinance. The second variance along the monument sign proposed along Torque Avenue, which is described earlier, is not a major street, so a second variance would be needed for that sign. And then each of these signs would also need a waiver from the minimum required 10-foot setback that's required of monument signs for multiple family developments. So those are the four variances. The petitioner is seeking for the two, the two signs. He had one along Crooks and one along Torque.
Any questions for Mr. Hedges? Seeing none as the petitioner here tonight?
I'm Candy Levy from Hudson, and I'm Mary from Esplanon Condominiums. And we are seeking the variance. When you go down Crooks Road, most of the signage for the businesses and the condominiums are facing perpendicular to Crooks Road so that you can see it both north and southbound. I feel like that's better visibility, even though that's not what is allowed. We also, the reason that they wanted the signage was to incorporate the address numbers on Crooks Road, which are currently not there, so we thought that would be a benefit for safety, deliveries. And regards to the setbacks, Esplanon is probably built in the 70s. They have a lot of trees and bushes, and if you went with the full 10-foot setback, you wouldn't even be able to see the signs.
Any questions for the petitioner?
I guess just from my standpoint, these are condominiums that are typically, I mean, they're owned, they're not rented.
Well, we have some rentals.
Right. But the signs' purpose is pretty much wayfaring, so know where addresses are at. So I guess I can see the one along Torque. But I mean, if someone's going down Crooks Road and they don't know where they're going, I don't think this is going to help them. But you want to answer that?
I'm Mary Mills, and I'm on the condo association board. And one of our owners complained that he was having deliveries, and they were having a hard time finding his address. On the west side is Royal Oak, on the, on the east side is, is Clausen. And so it's really difficult to see the addresses on our buildings, and our buildings are along Crooks Road and along our parking lot. So some of the buildings you can't even see from, from Crooks Road. So actually, that, you can see that sign when you're driving on Crooks Road. I mean, of course, everybody goes 50 miles an hour, but, you know, if you slow down, you, you really, it really is a visible sign. We put it up and then had to take it down because it was out of variance. We needed the variance, but, yeah. It is actually very visible.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, motions?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the variances. I'll move, the variances.
I was waiting for something else to follow that.
Follow after a second.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Kluster. A little more, Ms. Douglas?
You know I'm all about wayfinding, and Ms. Mills is correct. People are driving like crazy, like 60, coming up there. And if you were trying to find this, you know, one of these addresses or this complex, if you knew it was called Esplanon or you had a, without that, I mean, you're going to blow by it, and you're going to be a half mile down the road, turning around, trying to come back again. This is a, and these signs are very modest, and they could probably have asked, I shouldn't say this, they could probably have asked for more and gotten it, just because even what they're proposing is a fairly small sign, all things considered on fast-moving crooks. It's a no-brainer to me.
Any other comments? Mr. Quesada?
It doesn't appear to me to be a electronic messaging sign.
That's correct, is it?
No.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Quesada?
That's all I want to say.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Hedges, we're on to item three of other business and other sign variance, SV 180103.
Yes, this is a variance, sign variance to allow the refacing of an existing non-conforming freestanding sign and to install a new wall sign for a medical office at 1010 North Campbell Road. The variances are A, to allow two freestanding signs on one lot, and B, waive 18 and a half square feet from the maximum permitted 42-square-foot freestanding sign area located at the southwest corner of the site. The petitioner recently applied for a sign permit to simply reface an existing freestanding sign at this location and to also install a new wall sign on the building for a new medical office in a multiple-unit medical tenant building. The wall, proposed wall sign, there were no issues with the Building Division. That one complied with required standards for wall signage. However, there are two non-conforming signs at this location, both of the freestanding signs. Under the regulations for the sign area, only one freestanding sign is allowed per lot. This location has two. And freestanding signs are only limited to 42 square feet of sign area, and the one at the southwest corner exceeds that by 18 and a half square feet. Even though the wall sign that they were proposing complied with required standards, the Building Division was not able to approve their application and denied their permit due to the standard in the ordinance that states if there are any non-conforming signs on a property, that those must be removed before any new signage. It can be approved. So what the petitioner is seeking to do is to, you know, receive variances for the non-conforming conditions of those freestanding signs that would allow them to reface one of them for their business and then install the new wall sign for their business.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. Any question for Doug at this time? Seeing none as the petitioner here tonight? Come up and tell us about your sign.
Good evening. Mike Stevens. I'm representing a client. I'm from Sinorama in Troy. To give you the brief lowdown on this, we are planning on doing two sign face changes. I know the, actually, in the description here, it says that we're manufacturing a new wall sign. That wall sign is actually pre-existing. It's currently a Choice Dental Care. So the framework, the box, all that's still there. That would just be a reface, much like the multi-tenant monument sign is as well. We had previously done signs for this tenant. They were actually in the suite next to this. You can't see it on, I believe, that photo, but the, but the other photo. Nope, maybe, yeah, it's essentially not on that. So, yeah, it's actually to the left of that photo there. And then they had now occupied the space to the right where the dental group was before, and they were just planning on taking over that space, which they have, and refacing that sign as well as this sign here. That second monument sign is for the chiropractor office there. That is just, that would be on the north side of the property there. And that freestanding sign, I believe, was about 28 square feet, if I remember correctly. It was freestanding, just with their information on it. Thank you.
So the only thing that you're proposing with your request here, you're actually just refacing existing two signs, the one on the monument and the one on the building?
Correct. Yeah, actually, on this sign right there, previously, the tenant had occupied half of this space, so they already had their advertisement basically in this panel here. But due to the increase in size, they will be taking out an additional tenant panel to have basically matching urgent care location in terms of size.
Okay.
So their information is currently on that sign as well, and permits were pulled back in, a few years back, back in June, for refacing of that sign, and then also a secondary wall sign that was on the property as well.
Thank you.
Just to be, if I can, just to be 100% clear, the northwest corner sign is not going to be touched.
This, this is on the south side of the property, so yeah, that would be the north, north side.
The, the second non-conforming.
Correct. We're not doing any modifications to that, no. That's just the chiropractor in its entirety.
Any other questions? You can have a seat, I guess. You know, I, I mixed on this one, obviously, because I'm struggling for words, but the, the petitioner, I think, has some hardship in this, the fact that they're just trying to update a sign, but these are the signs that if, when we do redo our master plan or something like that, I'd like to see get rid of, because they're, they're kind of billboards on a stick, and I, I think they take away from, they're not wayfinding anymore. There are phone numbers, there are message boards, they could become electronic, you know, and we don't have a lot of tools to smack down signs any, you know, we're restricted on what we can deny. No content, electronic sign's going to go up, so it's, when it, I struggle with any sign variance at all. I, my, since I've been up here, I'm, I'm comply, comply, comply when it comes to signs, and I'll stop getting, I'll, I'll stop preaching, but that's why I'm conflicted on this.
Mr. Kassadah?
Well, if I can comment, yeah, these, these signs are not good-looking signs. These are bad-looking signs. Love to get rid of them. I'm, I, my struggle is with the fact this is one tenant, and they want to, they want to reface their one part of it, and if we require, what, what would we require? We would require that one of the signs come down in order to make them conforming, or, or, you know, if, if we're going to have another chance that's more appropriate to, to bring these signs into compliance, and hopefully, they'll be better looking, certainly, that would be great. If we're not, not going to have that chance and they end up being electronic messaging signs someday, well, that's another matter. So, yes, that's, that's, that's a bit of a concern, but I, I do feel like we may be imposing on this one tenant for the sake of the whole thing.
Ms. Douglas?
Well, I don't know that we're imposing so much on the tenant as we are on the landlord. I'm assuming that the landlord is picking up the expense for this, but we, this is the only bite at this apple that we get. Even if we revise our sign ordinance at some point down the road, the sign will be standing until something else comes along to change it. The opportunity we have right now is to deny this request because the, this existing sign is 50% larger than is permitted in this area. And we can, at the same time, require the removal of the additional non-conforming sign, and in fact, that's going to be my motion, to deny this variance and to, I think that's all I can do right now, is to deny this variance.
We have a motion to deny. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Cluster. Any further discussion? Mr. Kassadah?
I, I, I do look at leases as part of my practice, and I have to say, I, we don't know, because we don't have the lease, but it wouldn't be surprising if the tenant was, they're going to have to pick up any cost with the sign. Now, it doesn't always happen that way, but sometimes it does. I'm not sure that's going to control my vote, but I'm just making the comment.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote to deny them, this sign variance. All those in favor of deny, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is denied unanimously. Mr. Hedges, you have a number four, 2017 annual report.
Catch up here for a moment, yes. For this evening is the 2017 annual report for the Planning Commission that outlines all the cases reviewed in 2017, number of cases, types of cases, and some other data regarding actions taken by the Planning Commission last year. There's also a table at the end of the report outlining all cases that were viewed by address, listing what they were and what actions were taken, with other data regarding each case. No action is required. It's just simply an informational report that's required annually by the Planning Commission's bylaws. It's just presented to you for informational purposes, but if you have any questions regarding it, we can try our best to answer those this evening.
Were you the author of most of this?
I was the author of pretty much all of it.
Nice job, Doug.
Thank you.
Attaboy.
Like the charts and graphs, it's great. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thanks for that, Doug.
Sure.
And item, I'm sorry, item five, administrative site plan approvals?
Yeah, again, this is the list of site plans that were administratively approved by the Planning Commission through December 20th of the last quarter of 2017. Again, no actions required, just applied to you for informational purposes.
Pretty long list. What period of time does this cover?
This runs from September 28th through December 20th. It involves building permit applications the Planning Division reviewed that had site plans that we approved administratively that did not require formal review by the Planning Commission.
Great, keep our agenda small. I think that wraps it up for this evening, but we can't, we can't adjourn just yet because we don't have a quorum, just in the left ear.
What, we're stuck here? Gary just left and left us in limbo?
Can the chairman just adjourn a meeting? You don't need to vote to do that, do you?
Once you've completed your agenda.
I think we're non-compliant. We have to wait for him to come back? We have some Jeopardy music. I have more questions. About those administrative site plan approvals.
You just step into the gray room?
Yeah, I think he's just...
Oh, never mind.
Can, can I send a public?
Stop.
Can I send a public comment message to the DPS Department to get the pothole crew out, since the weather's been quite dramatic? Ask, ask those guys to fill the holes. That's all I have to say.
We're laying along, but I imagine they'll be plowing snow again this weekend based on the weather report.
Supposed to have more snow?
Yeah.
Five to eight inches.
Lord!
Yeah.
Eesh.
When you have that big variance in temperature, it really opens up the problems in the roads.
Yeah. Yeah, I just picked up my car tonight. My heater wasn't working for the past two weeks. If it weren't for heated seats, you'd be, I'd be phoning in from Beaumont with frostbite.
I guess the, since we're waiting patiently here, the item that got tabled, oh, nevermind, I'll save that for an email.
The move we adjourn.
Have motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Support.
Support. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.